Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. I'll ask Troop 76, who is here for their civic badge, to please rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance as we all rise.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you to everyone who is here, and especially our Boy Scouts, and doing your civic badge. Very appreciative that you have chosen to join us tonight. That said, we begin all our meetings with public audience. At the beginning of our terms, we serve two-year terms. We adopt rules for the conduct of the Board of Selectmen meetings. And per the rules adopted, in December, right after we were elected, we do permit individuals to speak for up to five minutes. We don't permit more than five minutes at the meeting, but we're happy to meet with anyone if they have additional comments that they want to make at a later time. So with that, we will begin with public audience. Mr. Kalishman.
Good evening. Thank you to allow me to address the board and the audience. One thing I would like to interject, with all due respect, in regard to your comments for public audience, you're not giving public audience, and don't try to create that impression. You are the board. The public audience comes from that court order right there on the board there. The order that says that you're to give five minutes or more, which you never give us, regarding public audience. So as far as it goes with getting permission for her to let us exercise our First Amendment rights, both state constitution and both United States Constitution, First Amendment, she doesn't give us anything. We have that right for the fellas that used to muster on that lawn right there. They used to muster, and they went off to Bunker Hill, and a lot of them, along with Dr. Warren, never came back. That's where we get that right. We get it from the Constitution, not from this board. I just want to interject, with all due respect to you, Madam, for Selectmen and the board. The thing that I'm troubled with is the new budget. And I see things that are going on, and you're so frugal, or you try to tell people you're frugal, and you're wasting money. I.e., this thing, when I questioned Sean about $15,000 to Dave Ryan for a go-kart, there had to be an expensive go-kart because it had to be diesel, and it cost $15,000. I was told, "Well, it's in the budget, and as long as it's in the budget, we're going to spend it." And now we're at logger's end here. We don't know whether we're going to end up with a 40% increase, a 3% increase. You don't know what your taxes are going to be. But the thing is, they're not being frugal. And they keep on going. They were asked by the Board of Finance to come with a budget 2% or under, and what did they do? They came in with a budget 2% over. And then the thing that troubles me, at the Finance Board, they said, "Well, what about the $100,000 or $200,000 we're going to give the Performing Arts?" And they said, "Oh, don't talk about that. We'll do that later." We didn't even know that the Performing Arts is going to get $100,000. And then the next thing that comes up, they come in, and we get $10,000 from the Hartford Symphony. Every year they perform down here, they pay the town $10,000. This year, we were shorted. They paid $10,000. The town owner received, I think, $7,500 or $8,000. $2,000 of that money went to the Performing Arts Center, went to Dave Ryan. How many times do you go to the well where we have to support that white elephant down there? And that's all it is, is a white elephant. Year after year after year, it's cost us money after money after money. And now they have a new gimmick. I just saw Mr. Demming. He's head of the people, and what they're going to do is they're going to go to all these companies in town that usually give to social services. In other words, they give to help out the poor with fuel, oil, food, whatever it may be. And you know what they're going to do now? They're going to have Mr. Demming and his group will go to these same people. They'll ask him for money to build that tall house that this board, ticket booth, that this board rejected. And then they're going to take that money, and then when the social services people come around, in my opinion, they'll say, "Well, we gave you money for the ticket booth. We're not going to give you money, as much money as we give for service." So they're going to short the services, civil services. In other words, the money we give to the poor. We don't like to say that poor people are in Simsbury, but the money they give out to people in need. And that's what they're going to be doing, to build a ticket booth for Mr. Dave Ryan that I guarantee is going to be over $50,000, going to be closer to $100,000. They rejected the same bid for $50,000, and now they're giving permission for Mr. Demming to take this. And you know, they presented it to the board two weeks ago. They didn't even have a name for it. I called the Planning Board. I says, "What do you call this thing if I want to find out from the Consumer Protection whether or not they have a permit to collect money?"
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
In other words, you need money. You need a permit from the Consumer Protection people of the state in order to go out and collect money.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you.
It's been over five minutes. Thank you.
The last time they did it...
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience?
...they were supposed to give money to the veterans that never got five cents.
There I am. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Maryann O'Neil for Meadowbrook Road, and I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I'm here tonight, basically, to thank the Board of Selectmen for all the support you've always given us, and to also ask for your continued support. The library, we really see, and I think, you know, anyone in town will say, it's really a community gathering place. It's the one place in town where the young can come, the elderly, the seniors, teens. We address programs to all facets of the community, different cultures, so people can learn about each other. We have a lot of multi-generational activities and programs, again, to bring people together. One thing I wanted to make you aware of, and maybe this addresses in some way Mr. Kalishman's remarks, there are people in town that really need the services that we offer through the computers that are available. Someone in town loses their job. The BRC is there to help them write resumes, to give them ideas, but 80% of all job applications now are done online. And if you don't have a job and you're looking how to cut funds, people will give up their Internet, their high-speed Internet, and they can go to the library, they can use those resources again and again. There's very few times when any of those computers are not used. It's just a facet of the library that we don't normally tout, and I thought you should be aware of. We try and be good citizens, the library and the board, trying to be responsive to what the town needs. Our budget this year is very lean. It doesn't have really any extra in it, and we already took a cut of a part-time circulation assistance. So I just, the other thing I wanted to make you aware of, 71% of our budget are salaries. So if down the road we get another cut, if we get a cut, there really won't be any place to cut other than ours, because that's the only way, if we cut salaries, what the impact is. But I appreciate your support. I know what a job it is with all the unknowns with the state, but I just wanted to give you my perspective, and the Library Board is here tonight, except for one person out in California, to support that and ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Maryann. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Witcomb Drive. As a taxpayer of more than 50 years, I am concerned that First Selectman Lisa Hevna is governing by trying to please everyone, leading to a failed leadership and wasted money. The First Selectmen's Office has become a do-not-offend zone with inappropriate agenda items for the Board of Selectmen to approve. Dave Ryan on the Democratic Town Committee and President of the Performing Arts has continued to ask for reductions of fees in the town, a $15,000 high-end golf cart, a failed senior center at the Meadows by calling it a community center where performing arts could entertain their guests, and now a permanent ticket booth. If approved, they say they will raise the money, but a shortfall is inevitable. A permanent ticket booth for two months of ticket sales does not allow the handicapped safe access is an inappropriate use of town land. The temporary trail has served its purpose over the years, and removing it to reduce their costs is unreasonable. It appears that the taxpayers are being asked to subsidize the failed 501(c)(3). If Dave Ryan's Performing Arts is losing money, then the town should use the facility for the benefit of the taxpayers and eliminate this venue. Recently, First Selectman Lisa Hevna proposed that the C-Tech Solar, a fledgling company, would gift the Simsbury Farms with solar panels. This would be another gift that was approved for C-Tech Solar to place solar panels on the International Skating Center. When C-Tech Solar came before the Board of Selectmen for an abatement for their property taxes for the panels, First Selectman Lisa Hevna lobbied for their abatement for a half hour. Now, First Selectman Lisa Hevna appears to approve another gift from C-Tech Solar for the community farm, although they have not paid over $44,000 in taxes. Nobody who is delinquent in taxes should do business with the town with a gift or application. Recently, First Selectman Lisa Hevna overheard my conversation that it was inappropriate for the town to do business with C-Tech Solar when they haven't paid their taxes. I discussed the fact with the Board of Education was originally going to use C-Tech Solar for panels at the high school, but they changed venues when I alerted them that they hadn't paid their taxes. It appears that First Selectman Lisa Hevna embraces the gift not to offend C-Tech Solar and is willing to ignore the fact that they haven't paid their taxes. First Selectman Lisa Hevna sent me an email with alternative facts about the Board of Education's present vendor. No need to respond. Recently, the Simsbury Ambulance asked for an $80,000 gift for an ambulance. The Ambulance Association receives money from insurance companies and other sources. The President of the Association, Michael Delahanty, receives a salary of $141,788, according to their tax return, and they have assets of $1,660,948. Michael Delahanty was refused by the Fire Department for the handout. However, when he came before the Board of Selectmen, the $80,000 was approved. The Board of Finance, after much deliberation, decided to give him a gift of $50,000 for the ambulance. It appears the taxpayers of Simsbury gift businesses with failed financial planning. Now we are being asked for to pay an addition for Eno Hall for Senior Center when there is no consensus that is needed. Additional space of 1,600 square foot would be provided if SETV would move to the basement of the library, 2,900 square feet of space. This would reduce the capital expenditures by $6 million and be a long-term solution to space accommodation at Eno Hall. This move is off the table because First Selectman Lisa Hevna does not want to offend friends of the library and is willing to ask taxpayers to pay for her failed leadership. I would like to know why First Selectman Lisa Hevna has not demolished the town's barn on Fire Town Road. This barn is in violation of the Blight Ordinance, since it is a public nuisance with the ability to enter the barn through the front hall. There is wire and boards that are dangerous at entry. I will file a complaint with the zoning enforcement officer. Now, the Personal Subcommittee is going to interview three applicants for consulting for a town manager. The Randy Frank LLC does not appear to be of the same quality. The town manager's job description should include a residency requirement. It is necessary to have a town manager reside in the town to assimilate with the residents and be an integral part of the community. The First Selectmen should not receive any salary in keeping with other towns with town managers. There is nothing in the charter that mandates a salary for service. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch News Feed on Facebook, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. If anyone else who would like to speak at public audience? We'll go with Linda, and then Susan, and then Nancy. Oh, my goodness. All right, we'll get through, everyone. We've got a few.
Good evening. I'm Linda Johnson, 32 Bantry Road in Simsbury. You on the Board of Selectmen all know me. Been around a while. Anyway, I am a new appointment on the last election to the Library Board, and I'm really proud to be here to speak on its behalf. I'm learning and am learning a whole lot about the library that I never knew. It's exciting to me because you walk through that library and you can feel the energy. It's just part of this massive, successful undertaking, which really is the Simsbury Public Library. I'm wondering if you know that there are about 1,000 people, 1,000 people, every day who enter that library. Astounding, 1,000 people. Over half the people in this town have library cards. Also astounding, and a real tribute to what the library, the Simsbury Public Library, is. I'm just going to touch on a little bit of what goes on at the library, and then I've got a couple of personal things just to say. First of all, the library is a partner in education. This goes from, you know, the little tots, early literacy, right through college. It provides volunteer activities and opportunities for anyone, teenager up through seniors like me. And it's a way of socializing and getting to know the community better. It's right there. It's right there on our main street. It's also, and this is especially crucial right now, a safe place for our teenagers. They can go, they have their own place, they can gather there, and know that they can talk, have conversation, and the safety factor is huge. And also, it's been touched on, is it is a partner in economic development. Maryann talked about this. And there are all sorts of resources there. If you're new coming into the workforce, there are the computers. There are all sorts of mechanical equipment, space for people who are starting up a business, as well as for someone who's already established a business, maybe for a different tact. Having said that, I'll close this. And it's amazing to me that people know that I'm on the Library Board. It just happened. I happen to have a very small, part-time job, and one of the gals who was in the store said to me, "Are you on the Library Board in Simsbury?" "I am." And she said, "Well, I'm a part-time reference librarian in West Hartford." And she's been in working with libraries her whole career, and now she is cut back to part-time. And in West Hartford, they said to her, "Go to Simsbury. Go out to the Simsbury Library. You won't believe it." What she did is she came to the library about a month ago. She walked around, she walked everywhere, and then she sat down by the fireplace, and she just watched people, the reference, people who are working there, the quality of the service, the upbeat atmosphere, and she said to me, "Wow." She said, "I have never seen anything to compare to this library." That was number one. And that was offered. I didn't ask. I just listened. The second was someone who lives in Simsbury, a gentleman that also knew that I'm on the Library Board. And he said, "I can't believe it." He said, "I went to the library and looked at what they had for business information, and something that I could do to supplement the job I already have." And he said, "There was someone there who came up, and between the two of us, he helped me really invent some new twist to his marketing skills." And he said, "Believe it or not," he said, "Linda, I absolutely don't believe it. It has been so effective, it paid for my taxes last year." All right? The library is a big deal, and I am just so aware of the great gift that we have. I would hope that you, as a board, will consider maintaining the level of quality that exists there.
Thank you, Linda.
I thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else? Oh, I forgot. Susan, then Nancy, then we'll make our way over here.
Good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Grange for my semi-annual announcement. I'll be brief. We are having our electronic recycling coming up on May 13th from 9:00 to noon in Andy's Market. So if you have computers, telephones, printers, any media, stereo equipment, things with wires, appliances, et cetera, you can bring them to Andy's Market. We will be assisted by some of these fine young men in Troop 76, so you will get to see them again, helping you to take the things out of your car, so you can just drive up, pop your trunk. Some of our Selectmen have been there and delivered some items, so it's quite a fun time. I want to mention, if you have things that maybe don't qualify for the electronics recycling, such as fluorescent light bulbs, batteries, paint, wood stain, lawn chemicals, pool chemicals, and other things like that, you can bring them to the Hazardous Waste Recycling this Saturday in Farmington from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Farmington High School. And if you have things that don't qualify for either one of those, which could be air conditioners, refrigerators, dehumidifiers, water coolers, vacuums, microwaves, or household batteries, household batteries you can bring to weldings, as long as you tape both ends, and all that other stuff, I'm sure you can bring to the transfer station. So I hope to see you on May 13th at Andy's Market. One other comment about the Grange, we had our first rock concert there recently, so maybe you didn't, we didn't advertise it because we were kind of nervous. Some of the Grange members were a little apprehensive about a rock concert, but it was a pre-Battle of the Bands for a few high school bands that were in the Battle of the Bands at the Simsbury High School. And I have to say, it was a fantastic success. We contacted the police ahead of time to let them know we were having it, and they stopped by. Everything was great. And so it's our first rock concert, so consider the Grange as another space for teen events, and I hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Do you want to put up the Grange recycling next to the Community for Care House?
Oh, sure. Thank you very much.
And if you have an extra copy, could you give one to Tom, and we'll put it in the First Selectmen's Report next time.
Okay. Can I email it to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll put this one up, and I'll email, and I'll step aside so the next person can step right up.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Anstey. I am not a Simsbury resident, I'm sorry, but I am the Executive Director of the Farmington Valley Visitors Association, and have had close relationships with Simsbury and the Selectmen and the EDC for at least 17 years, if not a little bit more. I had written you a letter that I assume you all have received, but it was very important for me to stand up in front of you and say, "Thank you so much for your support in the past, and we certainly hope that you will be able to support us with our yearly dues this year." We are a private nonprofit, as most of you know, but just for a little background information, we don't receive any state or federal funding. We are simply membership dues and fundraising efforts. And our whole mission in life is to enhance economic vitality and visibility in our towns by serving as a resource for residents, assisting an individual, a family, and business relocation, and enticing not only visitors from outside Connecticut, but residents of the valley and the state of Connecticut to come to the valley and discover the hidden gems that it has to offer. Simsbury certainly is a town that is dear to my heart and have spent a long time cultivating partnerships and collaborations to see what I can do to promote everything that Simsbury has to offer. I'm not going to go through the whole letter since you had it, but just a couple. The partnership and collaborations with Simsbury Tourism and the Chamber, the library, Simsbury Main Street, Culture and Parks, the golf course, Simsbury Meadows, Simsbury Historical Society, SETV, and more. And it has been my pleasure to do those kinds of things, and the more I'm in the meetings and the more I'm asked to help and assist promote Simsbury, it's something that I gladly do. And we are on our fourth Simsbury Triathlon, and I have been an integral part of that, as have been the Art Walk and other things in the past. So I thank you again for supporting, and I certainly hope that you continue supporting us at the same level, so I can continue to do this and more. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark.
Good evening. Mark Demming, 3 Ryan Circle, Simsbury. I'm here in the capacity, as President of the Friends of Simsbury Farms, to announce our second annual charitable golf outing on May 26th. This is the only outing and charitable event that we have, fundraising event that we have. $150 per player. We'll have dinner. We will also have raffle items. The mission of the Friends of the Farms has been to create, created to provide financial assistance to the Culture Parks and Recreation Department in the areas of enhancements of the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex for its users. Some of the things that we are looking forward to funding in the next year or two is a shaded area for the pool deck, which we couldn't do this year because of the redecking that was taking place, but we've allocated up to $5,000 next year to do so. Park benches for the area leading into the pool. We, I think, right now have one planned for at $800 each, and new signage for the facility that could cost somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000. On the golf area, we're looking to restore one of the orchards, put in a short game practice facility if funds are available, and permanent tee benches. All the funds we raise are from the private sector, and, as we said, they are not to supplant what the town does for it, but to enhance and add to those things that it doesn't. So would you like me to put one of these up here?
Sure. It's a big night for us.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Gail.
Gail Ryan, 20 West Ledge Road. I will be very brief, because you have already heard a lot about the library, and I certainly could only just add more, but I want to thank you for all that you have done for the library in the past. As a member of the Library Board of Trustees, I'm speaking in support of the library budget as it stands. The Board, the Library Board and community members, as you know, have just completed our five-year strategic plan, and the goals we have identified are critical to the future success of the library as a community asset. Implementation of these plans will not be possible without adequate funding, so I hope you remember us as you go forward with your budget plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, and we're very excited to announce that May is Bike Month, and we have some representatives from our Bike Ped community to tell us a little bit about this. If you get my First Selectmen's Report, you'll see at the back, we have the whole calendar, so lots of cool stuff coming up, and we're here to hear a little bit about it and then do a bike proclamation.
We were going to...
Stop.
We actually, in your absence, renamed it the Sean Ask 'Em First Selectmen's Report.
Thankfully, I'm back to chit-chatting.
So, do you want me to introduce you?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Diana Moody. I'm with the Simsbury Bike Ped Committee, and this is Deff Bibido. We're a part of that committee. And more thank yous to the Board for all of the years that you have really supported the bicycle initiatives since 2010, when we became a bicycle-friendly community. So we've really, really done a lot since then. We're now a silver community, so we couldn't have done it without you. So again, thank you very much. And as Lisa said, we're here to talk about National Bike Month. It is Bike Month here. There's going to be a lot going on, but it's also national. So what I would say to you, because this is also a travel month for people, so if you're out and about to different towns and doing different things, look for things that are going on with bicycling, because there's really a lot going on out there with a lot of activities. So I'm going to make this short and sweet, too. I'm just going to talk about a couple of our signature rides, and one of them, everybody's favorite, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Is our Board of Selectmen ride. So this one is going to be on May the 4th, and we always meet... are going on with bicycling, because there's really a lot going on out there with a lot of activities. So I'm going to make this short and sweet, too. I'm just going to talk about a couple of our signature rides, and one of them, everybody's favorite, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Is our Board of Selectmen ride. So this one is, this one is going to be on May the 4th, and we always meet here at Town Hall at 5:00. And we have a police escort, which is a lot of fun, and then we take a very short ride, five miles...
Yes, stop laughing at me!
At your own pace.
We did have an injury last year.
Yeah, and it was me, and I have bubble wrap ready this year.
Yes, yes. And if anybody doesn't have a bicycle, Simsbury Free Bike will be happy to supply, provide you with a bicycle. And then we stop at Jay Foster's for ice cream. So rain, you know, it's cold or rain, it doesn't matter. We just really have a good time, don't we?
We do.
So I think when your Foster's was not open yet, so we just went over to Starbucks and had some coffee. So, and hot chocolate. The next event, which is a signature event, is our Bike to Work Day, and that's on May the 19th. We always set up at Iron Horse Boulevard at, from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00. And then we have our Happy Hour at the Redstone Pub at 5:30. So, you know, everybody's welcome. You don't really have to ride your bike up. You can just come and join us and introduce yourself, and, because it's really about the community as well. So it's a good place to gather and meet, and meet each other. A couple of years ago, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce. So they have every Tuesday at the Redstone Pub, they call it the Walk Bike Run. So, because the idea is, we don't want to feel like, yes, it's Bike Month, but what we want to do is, what I said, is we want to bring the community together, we want people to be healthy and have fun. So every Tuesday, I just remember that at the Redstone Pub, because that's also a lot of fun. And I'm going to hand it over to Deb.
Try and be brief as well. I just wanted to thank the board again for supporting Bike Month. This is really a time to encourage people to bike for fun and fitness and transportation, but it's also a time to promote safety. So we recognize that not everyone wants to bike, or not everyone will bike, but we're all going to start seeing bicycles on the road and also on the rail trails. So it's really important for all of us to be aware, aware of safety issues and how to properly share the road and share the trail. We have lots of information on our website, which is www.simsbury.bike. There are also these pamphlets, various places around town. You can actually grab one on your way out. It's called, "Give Respect, Get Respect, Share the Road, Connecticut." And it goes through what the actual laws are regarding sharing the road as a motorist when you encounter a bicyclist. And one of the things that we do with our committee is that we try not to skew things pro-cyclists. We encourage people, we encourage our cyclists to follow the rules as well. So cyclists have the same rules, same responsibilities, and as motorists. Anyone in our committee is, would be happy to talk with anyone about any questions they have regarding share the road, so you can reach us through our, through our website. I also wanted to invite the board, as well as any teens, Boy Scouts, adults that live, work, or volunteer in Simsbury, to participate in our third annual Simsbury Bike Challenge. This is a program, it's actually part of a National Bike Challenge, where people ride their bikes, they log their miles online, and then they have an opportunity to possibly win prizes. We have a local prize program, it's usually things like gift certificates to local restaurants or bike shops. There's also a national bike, national bike, national prize program as well. And this has been tremendously successful in Simsbury. It's a lot of fun. It's just an opportunity to give you that extra nudge to get on your bike, maybe to grab your bike to run to Fitzgerald's instead of jumping in your car, or maybe that nudge to get you to be active instead of sitting on the couch. We've actually found that people do actually ride more when they participate in the challenge. You get points each day you ride, and we actually came in first in the country last year as an advocacy group. So we rode the most miles per the size of our community. We rode over 100,000 miles. So it's a lot of fun. It goes from May 1st to September 30th. I know we have some board members who participate and have won prizes as well.
And a prize winner.
So we really do have prizes. And so we have these rushers that are, are going to be around town as well, or you can find out more information on our website, again, www.simsbury.bike. And then I just wanted to remind our board members, as well as the community, that we do have three Bike to School events coming up. I know everyone enjoys those, they're lots of fun. The first one is Friday, May 5th, at Squadron Line. The second one is Wednesday, May 10th, at Tooton Hills, and that is actually the National Bike to School Day. And then the third one is Tuesday, May 16th, at Latimer Lane. And those generally are bike-walk-to-school events, even though it's National Bike Month, a lot of kids will, families will choose to walk, that's more convenient or more appropriate for them. And since the library is here today, I just want to make one other comment. We do have a new event this year that I'm really excited about, and that is, the library is hosting a Bike to the Park Day at Rotary Park. It is going to be on Wednesday, the 17th, which is a half-day of school. So it's at 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Rotary Park, and there'll be activities and treats, and we'll have the police there to check helmets, we'll have the bike seller there checking bikes for safety, and then we're going to take a little ride along Iron Horse Boulevard. We'll have people from the Bike Committee to help out and be, to chaperon the kids, et cetera. And so, very excited that the library's partnering with us on that, and I hope people come.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, just one thing. I do have some extra copies of the calendars, if anybody would like to have one, but you can pull it up on our website, which is simsbury.bike.
I think Nancy Anstey would like a copy.
Okay, Nancy.
So we do have a proclamation, and it's going to be read by Cheryl, who is our prize winner.
That's right. Our National Bike Challenge Prize winner. I was very pleased to be part of the Bike Challenge, and I look forward to doing it again this year. Proclamation. May 2017 is Bike Month in Simsbury, Connecticut. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, and environmentally sound and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness; and whereas the town of Simsbury, Connecticut encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation; and whereas the town of Simsbury, Connecticut recognizes bicyclists as illegitimate roadway users and therefore are entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in Simsbury; and whereas the town of Simsbury, Connecticut encourages the increased use of the bicycle, benefiting all citizens of Simsbury, improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources, and fostering exercise; and whereas the town of Simsbury, Connecticut recognizing the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation, endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling, and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for a vibrant downtown of Simsbury; and whereas the League of American Bicyclists has established May as National Bicycle Month, and the First Selectmen establishes May as Bicycle Month in Simsbury, Connecticut's first town to be designated as a silver bicycle-friendly community; and whereas the Simsbury Bicycle Advisory Committee and the First Selectmen encourage all citizens to ride their bikes to work, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family, to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling. Now therefore, I, Lisa Hevner, First Selectwoman of Simsbury, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim May 2017 to be Bike Month in Simsbury. Signed, Lisa Hevner, First Selectwoman, Town of Simsbury.
Thank you.
All right.
You guys want to take that? It's yours. So thank you for coming, and thank you for all your work. So I just want to point out, Bike Month is actually organized by all volunteers, and so we're very appreciative to all you do, working with our department heads on some issues as well. So thank you, and to our department heads and our departments who support you, and to the whole community who really enjoys the activities you do, so we're very appreciative of your work. Thank you. Okay, now going on to Sean's favorite part.
Move the table?
Absolutely not.
Nope. Did Sean ask him for Selectwoman's report? As it shall be named.
So you may have noticed the...
You weren't here, we renamed it.
Thank you. The Boy Scouts may want to, may be wondering why so many people have spoken up on the budget. We are in the middle of budget process right now. The Board of Finance at their, at their April 18th meeting, made a request to this board that we reduce our budget by $200,000. So we will be having that discussion later tonight. This, I don't know how much you are following what's happening at the state level, but the state is in a bit of financial trouble, and they are looking to shift some of their problems onto the towns, which means that we have less money to spend on town services if we're going to keep our taxes at a reasonable rate. So we are looking at all alternatives, and that's on the table for tonight. I wanted to announce that Simsbury ranks number one best suburb to live in Connecticut by Niche.com. We're very excited about that. Simsbury tops the list of best places to live in Connecticut and holds spots number one, Simsbury IV, Wheaton, and Mine West Simsbury. Great to see others recognizing what our residents have known for years, Simsbury is a great place to live, learn, retire, and do business. I knew, I wanted to let folks know about a new Simsbury community calendar. If you're looking for something fun to do in Simsbury, now there's a place you can go. It's our community calendar. You can check it out on our website. If you have an event happening in Simsbury, you can post it to the community calendar, and that's being managed by Simsbury Main Street Partnership. As you know, part of our economic development plans, the marketing study recommended that we create a community calendar, and this is one of those goals being accomplished. Thank you to Main Street, and to Mr. Cook, got this off the ground, so we're excited. Events are up, and you can really see, and it does allow anyone, as you know, we don't have the staff to manage a community calendar, but this enables people to post their own events. So you can put anything up there, as long as you are, it is happening in Simsbury. Susan mentioned that there is a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on April 29th at Farmington High School, and that's from 8:00 to 1:00. Thank you to Public Works for organizing and for coordinating with our community towns as a regional initiative. The Community for Care, as soon as I'm done with my report, I'm going to get back to that and let Cheryl, Cheryl remind me when I get to the end of my report on that. National Bike Month is in Simsbury. We just heard all about that, and we do encourage folks to come out and join us for a ride on May 4th. It really is fun. I'm hoping to be riding the cow bike, so it's very exciting. We do have a cow bike in town.
And there's, we arm wrestle for it, so...
Actually, I don't think we do. Surprise! Veterans and their families are invited to learn about veterans' benefits. Wayne Roux, Veterans Liaison for the Hartford Healthcare at Home, will speak about veterans' benefits May 11th. And Simsbury Tops include Survivor, Burial Allowance, Veterans Benefits, Entitlement, Services, and Presumptive Diseases and Service-connected Disability. And that event will take place from 1:00 to 2:00 at the Simsbury Public Library, and is co-sponsored by the Senior Center. Simsbury Library, again, I wanted to let folks know, if you haven't already seen this in my First Selectwoman's report, will be commemorating the 100th anniversary of America's entry into World War I with a series of programming events that are really fascinating and interesting, and they post that online. You can take a look at that. The May to June edition of the Senior Communicator is hot off the presses, and that lists all sorts of activities for seniors that we have in the community, includes classes geared to senior citizens, includes health and wellness classes, trips, lunch and dinner information, educational programs, and more. The Tri-Simsbury Adventure Triathlon is Sunday, May 21st at 11:00 a.m. That is a very fun event, where you bike riding, running, and kayaking on the Farmington River. It's a really fun event, if you haven't been there, and even if you don't participate, it's fun to go down and watch the event. The Taucot Mountain Music Festival at Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center has announced their schedule, and you can see that online. Although it seems strange, that given the weather report for tomorrow, the drought watch is still in effect, mostly statewide, but certainly in Hartford County, so we'll be monitoring that. Revaluation continues to be underway in terms of economic development. The library, I think a reference was made to the BRC, that's the Business Resource Center, for those who are not sure about the acronym, but that's a wonderful center that we have in town that really assists businesses, and they will be hosting a strategic planning program on April 26th from 6:30 to 8:00, and you can learn about strategic planning, a suggested format, and proven structure to help you develop, crystallize, and communicate your vision. And then there are other updates on, in your packets, including under construction in Simsbury, the formerly referred to Garden Homes is now being called Aspen Green, so you may see a different name there. And at the end of the report, you will, for those who don't want to go online, you will find the Bike Month schedule, so very excited to do that. All right, so with that, we will go on to our action items. Oh, Cheryl, thank you. And we have a very important event coming up from the Community for Care. Both Cheryl and Chris serve in that committee.
Maybe Chris can help me. Yeah, or Vanna White. Chris, who joins me on the Community for Care, and I are really proud to announce that we have a program going on at the high school on May 10th at 6:00 p.m. We have the world-famous Harlem Rockets coming to play, a team of Simsbury teachers, students, administrators, and we are going to have a program that focuses on healthy alternatives for students, ways to manage stress, anxiety, and other issues that students might be facing at school, without resorting to drugs, alcohol, and other activities. We're going to have various businesses from the community there to provide information and resources to families who may be interested in that. We think it's going to be a very fun and positive evening with a lot of good, positive messaging for the students, and I think everybody will have a great time watching our dream team play the Harlem Rockets.
Who's on, who's on our dream team?
Well, that's a...
That's to be determined.
That's a state secret so far. We're still working on that one. We have a suggested donation of $2 per person, or a non-perishable food item at the door. Children under five are free, so, you know, this is affordable, nearly free. We're trying to encourage the food donation. We will have bins available at the door. So as I said, if you have any questions regarding this event, you can call Simsbury Social Services. I don't have the number with me right this second, but it is on the Community for Care website, so please come out and join us for this really fun evening.
Thank you, and I just want to give compliments to the Community for Care, whose mission is really to inform and communicate to the community about drugs, alcohol, mental health issues. Very important. There, we've recently had questions about the opioid epidemic and marijuana, and there actually have been programs put on on these, and you can watch them online. They're on film through SCTV, thank you, SCTV, and they're there for anyone to watch at their convenience, but a lot of great information on the Community for Care website, and thanks and kudos to the committee for their hard work on this.
Really, really great contribution to the community. Everyone should follow up that.
So moving on, we will go on to action items, I think. Anna May? May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $3,893.58?
Removed.
Okay. We'll go with Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Andrew, nice to see you. Come on up. I'm going to introduce you, and then I'll give you the four. Before the board is a request, just one sec. Is a request from the Eagle Scout candidate, Andrew Bissett, of Boy Scout Troop 175, to approve an Eagle Scout project for a duck shelter at the community farm of Simsbury. Mr. Bissett is joined by Joni Marshall, Jenny Marshall?
Jen Jambaza.
Oh, I've got that all wrong.
Yeah, Johnny, no problem.
Oh, okay.
I'm pitch-hitting tonight.
What, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Jennifer Jambaza.
Jennifer, okay. From the community farm, and to go over it, I'm going to invite Andrew to tell us about your project and to hand out anything, any information you have.
I have this to hand out. This is just a rough sketch. I have drawn, I have architecture, drawn sketches for a bit, but this is just a rough sketch, and this is the site line as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Andrew, what is your target date for your Eagle Scout? Do you have it yet?
No, but I would like to get it done this morning. So, as you guys know, I'm Andrew Bissett. I'm a life scout at Troop 175 in Sims, here in Simsbury. This Eagle Scout project is a duck shelter for the community farm of Simsbury. Who this is going to benefit? This is going to benefit the farm greatly, because it, the farm runs based on, partially based on educational programs for, for school-aged and middle-aged and adults. And right now, for the ducks, there's no actual place, right now, they have an actual place for them to stay. They have a makeshift shelter in the barn, basically, and they stay with the goats right now. They stay with the goats.
Oh, my gosh.
And by doing the ducks, by building the duck shelter, they're going to have their own place to live, and we can show the young students of Simsbury that, yeah, so, yeah. And also, the farm is getting ducklings.
Yep.
So, right now, they have no place to stay, and they might get trampled by the goats, so we need to...
That doesn't happen.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, but...
Tough neighborhood.
But it could happen.
Yard goats, aren't they?
And the goat, and...
Sorry, about the yard goats.
Shh, sorry.
And the ducks, and the ducks, and the ducks. And also, the farm is getting ducklings. So right now, they have no place to stay, and they might get trampled by the goats, so we need to.
That doesn't happen.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tough neighborhood.
But it could happen.
Yard goats, aren't they?
And the goat, and.
Sorry, about the yard goats.
Shh, sorry.
And the ducks, and the ducklings need a place to stay, and all the ducks will be safe from wild animals in this duck shelter. My workforce will be fellow scouts, my mentor, who is actually an architect, his name is John Einison, family and friends. And I will, I can guarantee support from my troop. We've had over 200 Eagle Scouts come from Troop 175, so I can guarantee that I'll have as much support as I need by building, for building this. For fundraising, I will be doing a car wash, which brings in over $800 every car wash, at least, a bottle drive, and donations from family and friends. The cost at max will be $1,500, and something that's important is that I'm going to be doing all the fundraising, so this costs nothing to the town. So supplies, I have architectural drawings here, if any of you would like to see them. Actually, in my folder right here, I have drawings here, drawn by an architect, if any of you would like to see them. Some supplies are pressure-treated wood, outdoor wood, Trex decking, which will be the only reason why this project is expensive, corrugated roof, and hardware cloth, which is another reason. And any tools that I need, my father and my mentor, who's an architect, will have, so, all that. And like I said, this costs the towns, this costs the town nothing. And I talked to a woman on the phone named Robin Newton, and she had told me to ask for all fees to be waived, all permit fees to be waived.
So you're making that request tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So Robin Newton is our zoning enforcement officer, and she'll be assisting you with this project. I did, was able to talk with council and with Mr. Rabbit, and because this is a small project, eight-by-six movable structure does not require an 824 referral. So tonight, we will be making a motion to accept the gift of the duck, the duck structure, and to waive all fees associated with permitting.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to know what breed are your ducks? I'm a 4H poultry mom, so.
We have a giant Peking who thinks she's a dog.
I get that.
And then we've had, so we've had several giant Pekings and some mallards. We've been getting our ducklings from local school kids who grow them, hatch them in their classrooms, and then, and then we take them. It kind of saves us that first step.
As I say, 4H poultry moms, so I know those are very docile, friendly breeds, and that's a great contribution to the town farm, so thank you.
We think so, too.
Yes, of course.
Andrew, can you tell people and the folks watching where they could donate bottles and cans if they'd like to contribute to your bottle drive?
Well, I live at 21 Clifton Drive, and you guys can drop them off there, or.
Thanks, Dad. We'll be there tomorrow morning, bags in hand.
Is there a particular time when that might be convenient for you?
You can drop them on, we'll do the honors.
Excellent.
I might that we accept the very generous duck shelter gift and waive all associated permit and fees.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Appreciate your work.
Very nice presentation. It can be hard to be in front of so many people, and so you did a great job. Thank you. And thanks, Mom and Dad, for supporting him.
That address was not.
Moving on, you have before you a motion to accept a donation from the Simsbury Veterans Memorial, Inc. We have with us Len Lanza. I think I saw Len. Oh, there you are. Before the board is a request from the Simsbury Veterans Memorial, Inc., in the amount of $27,290 for the construction of additional improvements for the Simsbury Veterans Memorial project, including sidewalk and fencing. The proposal and process have been reviewed and approved by council. We also have town engineer Jeff Shay, who has been working with the veterans on this, and I'll invite Jeff or Len to speak to this donation, if you would like.
Quickly, during the development of the project, the Simsbury Veterans Association felt it was necessary to provide better access to the memorial for primarily pedestrians and people with disabilities. There's presently no connection between the memorial and a parking facility, so this donation will actually provide a connecting walk between the memorial that's complete and the library parking lot, and we will establish a handicap-accessible space in that corner area near the memorial, and also a timber rail fence, basically, to protect the pedestrian from the embankment behind the sidewalk. So it's a very generous donation, and actually, part of the donation that we've articulated in this is actually additional donor payers, which will be, I believe Len paid for directly by the veterans. So that amount of $795 will actually not be a donation to the town. It'll be a direct pay by the veterans.
The precise number would be $26,495.
Say that again, 26,000?
$26,495 as opposed to the $27,000 figure, because that higher figure included the $795 being paid to the Ingraham.
Kathy, you have that corrected number? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for either town engineer or for Mr. Lanza?
More of just a comment. I can't thank the veterans enough. I appreciate what you guys have done previously, and this is something really special to anybody that drives by at night. I nearly had an accident. I got to be conscious not to look at it when I'm driving, but it's absolutely gorgeous, and I think adding this feature to it so that people can get to it easier and safer from the parking lot is a great thing, so thank everybody very much.
I'll echo that. And Len, it's been a pleasure working with you and with your veterans on this, and.
The pleasure is mine.
Beautiful addition to the town, really.
All right, so with that, may I please have a motion to accept with our thanks a donation of $26,495 from the Veterans Memorial, Inc., for additional improvements to the memorial area, including sidewalk and fencing.
So moved.
We'll go with Mike on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before you is a motion to approve the townwide mailer, budget mailer. We hope one day we will have a budget. We are coming to you in terms of format. This is the same format we use every year. As you know, it's a little prescribed by law. Council has to review it, and this form has to go to the state, and they have to approve it with all sorts of legal considerations there. So this is one we have used in the past. We would then replace the numbers to update the numbers once we actually do have the final budget, but I did want to give this board an opportunity to look at the form, and the motion would be made, again, subject to town council review and approval, because they, council will have to review it once we have the final numbers.
Aye, so moved.
Any further discussion?
I just think it's a great format for transparency and letting people know where we are with their tax dollars, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Could you pass these out, please? As I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, at our April 18th, 2017 meeting, the Board of Finance requested the Board of Selectmen this board to prepare recommended reductions to this board's budget in the amount of $200,000. For those who are from the Boy Scouts, our budget is about $20 million. The Board of Selectmen is responsible for debt service, for the debt service operating line, as well as our department head operating budgets. It is unlikely that there will be a scenario, especially in light of the news that came out today about revenue at the state, where the deduction number becomes more favorable. So we are anticipating that this is the most favorable response we will get from the Board of Finance. We will know more later this week, once the appropriation budgets and the finance budgets are released by the legislature. As we are awaiting that information from the legislature, I do not think at this point, and I confirmed that with the chairman of the Board of Finance this morning, that we need to take an actual vote tonight, but we do want to pass out some options for a discussion and implications in the start of the conversation. I anticipate taking a vote at our next meeting on May 8th. The Board of Finance plans on holding a special meeting May 2nd at 5:45 in the main meeting room to review additional information from the legislature, which could further impact reductions to our operating budgets, so we'll await further direction from them on May 2nd. Working with department heads, town engineer, and director of finance, I wanted to put forward a few options to consider and welcome your suggestions. I also want to let folks know that there will be a second public hearing by the Board of Finance, May 16th, at 5:45 p.m. to review what we have here. What we did is, to make reductions, we have three options, for the most part. You can make operating reductions, which are the budgets that we use day-to-day, what you spend on a daily basis. You can do it through capital bonded projects, or you can do it through capital cash projects. And so the first option I'm presenting to you is a Senior Center phase-in option. That would involve changing the capital improvement plan to having $300,000 in fiscal year 18. We currently have a 5.8 million. For upgrades to the kitchen and bathrooms, and delay the 5.3 million in Senior Center major construction for two years. Moving out the $5.5 million in the senior project by two years, leaving the 300, decreases the projected fiscal year 19 issuance and increases the projected fiscal '21 issuance by 5.5 million. This frees up additional debt service capacity in the early years of the debt service planning model, which in turn enables the town to pay cash for more projects and reduce the debt service percentage for fiscal year 18 and in future years to a 6.42 percent. So that is a policy decision we would be making to recommend a 6.42 percent debt service, at least for the next year, generating approximately $202,000 in savings while still having a CIP that, a plan that fits under the Board of Finance guideline. The other option we have is a combination of operating reductions and capital cash reductions. I want to thank Mr. Cook and members of the Bloomfield staff and Board of Selectmen over there. We are looking into a shared building inspector position with the town of Bloomfield. As you know, we had recommended funding that for $80,000. All in cost is a little more with health and insurance, so the Bloomfield share, if it was a, not quite equal, but almost equal amount, would be $55,000 shared. That number may change. It's an estimate right now, but we thought it was a reasonable number to put forward to you. The negotiations are still ongoing. They're closed, but we don't have a final number yet. Just as clarification, were we to share that position, we would contract out the position to Bloomfield. Bloomfield would then pay the town, but that would go into the general fund, because we don't have a special revenue fund for that, but we do believe that the Board of Finance will credit us for that savings. The other recommendation is to reduce $7,000 from the finance department, use our capital budget and our technology line item there to cover the first year of the asset management system, which is worth $5,000. It would eventually have to return to the operating budgets in later years, but we do have the ability to absorb that in the capital budget this first year. And the second recommendation from the finance director is to reduce the annual report allocation to 2,000. Currently, we publish multiple copies of the Board of Finance annual report at about $19 per copy. If we reduce the number of copies we produce, do it mostly online, and we have the capacity to now Xerox in color, so that would enable us to do some of that reduction. We are able to take a $14,648 reduction in the police line item to reflect a lower pay grade for a new officer replacing a retiring officer, so that is a reduction we can take Another thing for this board to consider is the elimination of the police clerk position that the board added back at $13,747. And from the planning department, we had reductions in 2,500. As you know, the Economic Development Task Force recommended a series of educational programming for our land use boards and for staff, and said that we would just reduce that throughout. That only gets us to $92,895, so we would recommend additional capital cash reductions, which would include a $102,000 delay of the townwide park master plan by one year. This plan, as you know, needs updating. It was last done in the 1960s. It would mean we would go back to a reactive approach to planning with our parks as opposed to proactive, not best practices, but I wasn't sure where else to take it. The other thing we would do is 10,000 reduction in open space improvements, and that's the Betty Hudson construction area there. And that would total 112,000 for total reductions in option B of $204,895. So like I said, tonight, we don't really need a final determination of where we want to go, but I didn't want to put those out, and also open it up to the board if there are any other options you think we should consider or initial thoughts.
So there's no good options here, obviously. We're down to bare bones, and I do appreciate you and Sean and the rest of town staff putting this together, because it's, obviously, these are hard decisions to make. Again, happy to do anything that the rest of the board wants to do tonight, but perhaps we should wait on our deliberations until we know for sure, or as sure as we're going to be with the state budget and otherwise later in the week, plus the second public hearing, because, you know, we've got some additional time. And again, appreciate, you know, library board, now all the folks coming here. We don't want to get folks riled up with potential cuts until we really know what we're going to do, because, again, whatever we do, we're going to do the right thing and thoughtful approaches and make it hurt as little as possible, but, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're probably going to have to reduce something, so, again, maybe just wait until we get some further clarity and then.
So I did run that by the chairman of the Board of Finance, and he was okay with that. We don't need to make the recommendation until after the second. Our next meeting would be May 8th, and that would give us time to get back to the Board of Finance on the 16th, which is their public hearing day. We've been given the guidance. They generally do not look, they give us a dollar number and rely on us to make the decisions, and not to say that they can't. They do have line item authority over our budgets, but in the past, they have given discretion to the board to pick which items, so we will have the opportunity to do that. This board time to really take a look at it, reach out to residents, see what they're comfortable with. And to get feedback from the public, which I think is very important.
Which I think, you know, to Sean's point, is, has been helpful tonight, to hear from people about things that are important.
Absolutely.
So, Mike?
I echo what Sean said. This, none of these are choices that any of us make happily, to say the least, and, but our job is to come forward with a budget that we can recommend, even if it is reluctantly. I do think, and I would ask everybody in town, if you have an idea of where you think we can cut some money, please share it with us. It's great that people come up and say, "Don't cut us," but we're going to have to come up with some money from somewhere. And I think it stinks that we've got to take this approach, but I would ask people to try to help us and give us some of their insights and help us to make some of these choices, because we are going to have to put forward a balanced budget in some fashion, and if we don't hear anything, then we're going to have to make our own decision, and it's going to be some tough choices, to say the least.
And I think we are hamstrung to a certain extent, because a lot of our increases are bound by contractual legal obligations and statutory charter obligations, and we can't, we're not here to break the law and not meet our obligations to the voters, so.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to crystallize, as I look at the options here, you know, option A defers, doesn't change the scope of the Senior Center, but it defers stages payment over a period of time. What's attractive about that is it allows us to retain some of these pinch points in the operating reductions, which I think were things that staff felt that were important relative to managing demand, so that's attractive to me. On the other hand, what I really want to take a look at with the reduction of capital projects is what's the impact the next year or two years if we drift back towards, you know, 6.77 or 7% debt reduction? So for me, those are really kind of the two key things I look at. There's kind of stewardship of stress points for current staff, and can we eliminate those if possible? But to the same extent, what I don't want to do is have a de facto 1.3% necessary expense increase down the road, so I don't really have the answer to those. I'm just saying this is kind of where, you know, I look at these, by the way, I also think these are very well-presented options, Lisa, but that really crystallizes for me what I'm looking at relative to a couple of options here.
I think those are really great questions. I mean, you see in just a very small window there, just the 5,000 that we would use for asset management will have an operating impact later in the time, but also reduction in capital. capital if we switch to the 6.42. Question is, do we keep it there, do we jump it back up? And that could be an additional 300, 200,000, depending on the year we do it, if I am remembering correctly from Sean's shaking hands. But we will have that discussion, and he'll bring his chart with the magical line, and we'll show how... But the problem is, to I think everyone's point, there is no good answer. This is a bare-bones budget. We know that just meeting our salary and pension and health obligations requires us to come at 3.5. We're coming at 3.6 because we needed to add a police dispatcher so people aren't put on hold because of the increase in population. So it's really a bare-bones budget and increases to meet public safety. So I do want to, first of all, congratulate this board for working in such a collaborative manner, not only among ourselves, but with the Board of Education, the Board of Finance. It really takes a team, and also the members of the public who have shared their interests, their concerns, and their values, because our budget reflects our values. Our budget is what we value about this town and where we want to spend our dollars. The good thing I can say about the property tax is that the dollars you spend locally stay locally, so every dollar you spend is most accountable to you, so very appreciative. Are there any other questions before we move on on that? Okay, so we will take this up on the 8th. Again, if you have suggestions or additions or alternatives that you want us to consider, please forward those to Sean, and we'll keep a list of those. Moving on to appointments and resignations. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Roger Spear, Republican, as a regular member of the Hometown Hero Committee, effective April 11, 2017?
So moved. Do I need to recuse as historical, because this is the historical society member?
No, because you have no financial.
I don't, but so, I don't know if it...
You're here.
Well, I'll put it, the motion forward as most...
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Amel Dalquus, Democrat, as a regular member of the Hometown Hero Committee, with an expiration date of December 4, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
I will go with Sean and then Elaine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The Hometown Hero Committee, I guess by ordinance, or I'm not sure how it was done, but we've always had a member of the historical society who assists, so...
They do it by group, and Amel actually is members of, he is a former hometown hero and a veteran and a member of the historical society board. So he ticks all the boxes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to reappoint Susan Beardsley, Public Schools Director of Health Services, to the Board of Directors of the Farmington Valley Health District for a three-year term effective April 24, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have Melissa Appleby here. If you haven't had a chance to get to know Melissa, Melissa just raised her hand so the public can see you. May I have a motion to appoint Melissa Appleby, Deputy Director of Administrative Services, to the Board of Directors of the Farmington Valley Health District for a three-year term effective April 24, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Elaine and then Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Fern Jansen as Director of the Greater Hartford Transit District, with an expiration date of January 31, 2021, for the request of the Executive Director of the Greater Hartford Transit District. I did want to point out that Fern is happy to give this up if somebody would like to...
Nope, he's our guy.
But it just, and, and for, for his service, because that's, you know, a little bit heavy. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Sean and then Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have, you have in your packets the regular minutes from the meeting of April 12, 2017. If there are no changes, those minutes will stand as final. Take a minute to look at those.
Did you get an appointment for the housing authority?
No. Tom, we didn't get an appointment for the housing authority.
Town clerk didn't get it until later on in the afternoon.
Oh, the town clerk must not, sorry.
It hasn't been made yet.
It came up at the housing authority meeting the other night, that somebody needed to be re-upped.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it either.
So I, I don't expect that to be a problem.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Is it urgent that it be done tonight?
Um, it was somewhat urgent in that it's the chairman, and there's budget documents for CHFA that have to be signed, but I, I don't...
And that's, who is the chairman? Ron?
Ron Zepili, yeah.
Ron Zepili?
It has been submitted to the town clerk.
It was, as of this afternoon. The term expired, and just as of, I think, April 1st, right?
I believe so.
Yes.
So we just, we just need to reappoint Ron.
Is he a Republican or a Democrat?
Republican.
Republican.
So you, you're, this, my Republican colleagues are comfortable with that reappointment. I know normally this is...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it was...
We respectfully ask for an exception, we, yeah.
I'm sorry about that. I thought that it had come in.
Yeah.
Okay. So may I have a motion to amend the agenda to appoint Ron Zepili as a member of the Aging and Disability...
Simsbury Housing Authority and Commissioners.
Simsbury Housing Authority.
Board of Commissioners, yeah.
I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Mike and then Chris. Any further discussion? Oh, so we amended the agenda. Now I need the motion to, all in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
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 Okay. May I have, why don't we go ahead and do the same motions? To appoint Ron's...
To appoint Ron, to...
Or to appoint Ron Zepili to Simsbury Housing Authority, effective...
Yes, that's just what I was going to say.
April 24, 2017. How about that?
Please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we have an expiration date on that?
Five years, so it'd be April 1, 2022?
One, I think.
2022?
Or a five-year term.
22, I think, five-year term.
Okay. Okay, so with that friendly amendment?
Thank you.
Yes, friendly amendment.
Sean, did you make the second on that?
Cheryl did.
Cheryl did? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The motion carries unanimously. So we'll go back to the meeting minutes. Are there any changes to that?
I have none.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to selectmen liaison, subcommittee reports, and personnel. Do you have an update?
Yeah, we have an update, and then we want to have a conversation with the executive committee after the meeting, so... So the update is fairly quick. I'm just passing back out. At the last meeting, we presented to you, for your feedback, a, a rough draft of a job description for the town manager. We met this week. I just want to validate that we incorporated the feedback to two key things, was there was some explicit language in there granting right to participate in board meetings. We did remove that from the job description, you'll see that. And then Elaine, you had a couple of general areas, and in particular, making sure that it was very clear that the town manager supports the strategic planning process, doesn't necessarily own it. So we reviewed the document and made some edits relative to that. There is one additional edit that I think is fairly small that Melissa had made.
Formatting.
Right, just, just formatting, but so just handing this out, and as you take a look at it and have additional feedback, you can submit it. One thing that we actually made a decision not to include or exclude, which did come up tonight with Joan, is the issue of a residency requirement. What we wanted to do was take a look at that as a separate sub-issue. We've had an initial meeting on it where we talked about the pros and the cons. We have a couple of areas that we want to research. We want to come back, have a conversation on it, and then make a suggestion to this board. And then additionally, as we bring the consultant in to work on, you know, the benefits, the